Uh huh.
Yeah, he used to always say he was coming and he would show up.
He still got a good mind.
It's that time, isn't it, Mr. DeMoy? All right, um, good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock on Tuesday, June 1st, and it is time to begin our city council meeting, so I will call it to order. And we're going to begin this meeting like we do each of our meetings with the invocation, the pledge of allegiance. And as we often, um, do, Councilman Alexander is going to lead us in the invocation, and tonight, um, Councilman Overton is going to lead us in the pledge. So if you would stand with me, please.
Let it be your heart pray. Your time gracious God, once again, we come with thanksgiving in our hearts. We thank you dear Lord for allowing us to see a brand-new day. Repay our God that I be in the midst of this, uh, meeting tonight, and let everything we say and do be pleasing in your sight. In Jesus' name I do pray, and every heart say, "Amen."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and if you would call the roll for us, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Here.
Councilman Alexander.
Present.
Councilman Fan.
Here.
Councilwoman George.
Here.
Councilman Hayes.
Present.
Councilwoman Love.
Here.
And Councilwoman, Councilman Overton.
Present.
One is present, and we do have a quorum. Ms. Alexander is sitting in this evening for Ms. Kitchell. So, um, next we have on the agenda, the approval of minutes. These are from April 6, 2021 meeting. It was an electronic meeting.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilwoman Love, second by Councilwoman George. Um, any, um, corrections or additions? Okay, seeing none, all in favor of approving the April 6 minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. They are approved unanimously. Now, we'll move on to public recognition on agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting that anyone can speak on an item that's on the night's agenda. You can, um, come to the podium, introduce yourself, give us your name and your address, then you'll have five minutes to speak. I want to tell you that there are two public hearings tonight, so if your concerns are about either of those, you may wish to speak under the public hearing portion of the meeting. The first public hearing will happen under item number one, and it's on the Red River Townhomes. The, um, next public hearing is item number three, and that is the plan for Triple Brook. Um, so if either of those are something you wish to speak of, you may wish to wait on those public hearings, but otherwise, oh, and there is a time at the end of the meeting where you can speak to anything that's not on the agenda. So just so you're aware that you have those options to speak this evening. But right now, we will open public recognition on agenda-related items. Invite anyone to come forward who'd like to speak.
Good evening, Council. Mayor Brown, uh, I do have two agenda items I wanted to comment on this evening. Um, the first thing would be...
I know address. We know it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I totally forgot. Michelle Juvance, 1335 Long Hollow Pike. Um, yeah, so the first thing is, uh, hiring of the fire chief. Um, I want you to get us the fi- the best fire chief that you can get for us. Last week, HR said that there were a lot of excellent, qualified, experienced candidates, and I think that is wonderful. So as a citizen of Gallatin, and as a taxpayer, and as a voter, I am telling you that I want for you to vote on the best, most qualified candidate for us. Um, we are Gallatin, I am Gallatin. Um, we, we're the ones who actually pay the salaries of all the department heads and all the employees with our taxes. So that's what we want. We want the most qualified candidate. Um, second, on the budget, um, pretty much the same thing that I said at the last council meeting, that I want you to fund the $15,000 line item for the firemen's, uh, firefighters' Class A uniforms. Um, uniforms are important, and they deserve it, and it's only a $5,000 shortage from what they had asked for that's on the budget. So I think that there's a, a way to find that $5,000 from a different line item and give that, give that to the firefighters so they have that line item fully funded. Um, I wanted to also thank you all for discussing last week about our firefighters, and you, you did discuss the how that they are underpaid and are working two to three jobs. Um, I want our firefighters to be taken care of better. That's something that you all need to fix, and I don't want you to just talk about it or study it, because I know there's a study in the budget, um, another study, um, but that's something that needs to be fixed. I think that's important. They need to be paid properly. Um, I wanted to put some, give something to be put into the record. Um, this is actually, um, something from a blog that was on, on the Pascal for Gallatin 2020 website. Um, and it was a blog that was written November 2nd, 2020, so this was last year before the election. And it's called Grossly Inadequate Pay for Gallatin Firefighters and the Council Doesn't See or Doesn't Care. So I printed this off of his website. Um, so this is, um, I'll just read a little bit of it, just to let you know that this is something that Pascal's been talking about since he found out about it while he was campaigning. And I think that this is your job to take care of our firefighters, and, um, I really would want you to take care of them. So, uh, last month, during my campaign for the at-large city council seat, I met a young firefighter who came to my booth at Oktoberfest and told me that the firefighters were not making enough money. We had a conversation about his job and his quality of life. I was appalled, and I started to do some homework to look in, to look at the issue with new eyes while it is being overlooked by our city council. I visited three fire halls and spoke to firefighters there. I am appalled and I am angry about what I discovered. Our Gallatin firemen are grossly underpaid, less than an hourly Gap warehouse worker. Additionally, some are using out-of-date turnout gear, waiting for the city to fund the replacement gear, which, um, thank you for putting that on the budget this year. So that is being funded. Um, it says, "I learned that two studies were conducted to compare our Gallatin Fire Department with other middle Tennessee fire departments. Both studies found that our Gallatin firefighters are paid less than the average middle state firefighter." I'm not going to read the whole entire thing, but I'll just tell you what it says in the last paragraph, and it says, which is Pascal saying, "That whether I get elected or not, I will make it my mission in the next year to make sure I do whatever I can to focus on one of the most important emergency services that is the city's job to provide, our fire department. How did this happen that it is so drastically underfunded? How is Gallatin the nicest place in America, but our firemen need to have a second job just to be able to pay their bills?" So, um, I'll give that to you. Um, okay, well, I guess that's it. But anyway, please hire us the most qualified fire chief, and please give our firefighters a raise. Thank you.
Anyone else wishes to speak, you can come forward at this time.
Pascal Juvance, 1335 Long Hollow Pike. Uh, would like to take, talk about the fire chief. Keep going on that. Um, I'm not gonna go back to what I said last week and go back to every line, um, on the charter of the city and the rules. Pretty sure Suzanne, uh, emphasized that again, and I want to thank her for all the comments she made last week. I know we don't always agree on things, but, you know, she were great comment, and I want to thank our HR department for the fantastic job they did on that. Um, thanks to George. Uh, we got name in the paper, and what I see is fantastic. Uh, come on, the retired commissioner of the Chicago Fire Department want to be our fire chief. That's, that's great news. Like Michelle said, we want the best, uh, fire chief we can get, um, because that's our right. But I think the issue there is not that. Um, the issue is how people, while not from here, or I think you call us transplant now, are treated in this city. Um, I took some extract of the Gallatin News when Fire Chief Williams resigned, and there is pretty, pretty hard words on that. He, he's saying it black and white. He said that, um, he feel that for all the time he was there, he was not treated fairly, and people were making sure he knew he was not from there. So I think there is something that needs to be done there. Um, whoever fire chief we're gonna get, we need to make sure he's gonna feel at home, so he can do the best job he can. And again, we need a fire chief with all the qualification required. Um, there was another quote, who pretty, uh, was pretty, pretty intense on there, um, from, uh, Councilman Alexander. Quote, "I know beyond the shadow of a doubt that he was not treated fairly," Alexander said, talking about Chief Williams. "He was excellent, he was smart, and he had a lot of good ideas, but it didn't matter about how much knowledge he had, he was just a black man." That, that got me to the core when I read that article again. And that should not happen to the next guy, because that is bad. We should not have this kind of stuff in this city. So to go back to laws and all that stuff, I printed a word for you today, dereliction. Definition is shameful failure to fulfill one's obligations, and as a noun, is called dereliction of duty. Dereliction of duty is used in a lot of laws at state level and federal level, um, for council members. It's, you've probably seen that a lot. So I would like to remind you that your duty as council is to go by what the charter and the rules you actually voted on, and make sure that tonight we get our fire chief so we can move forward and make sure our fire department move forward and be the best it can be. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else wishing to speak this evening? Okay, seeing no one, I will declare public recognition on agenda items closed, and moving now to Mayor's comments. Um, not much this evening. I do want to, um, say a big thank you to, um, Chapter 240 of the Vietnam Veterans of America and our local American Legion and American Legion Auxiliary for the two memorial services that they organized yesterday. They were both lovely and especially moving, and if you didn't attend, you really missed, um, a compelling, a compelling tribute to what the day was all about, and I think they did a lovely job with it, and I'm so honored that both of those happened in our community for our citizens. Um, so thank you to those groups, and thank you also to all those who attended it. Oops, I did not start, set the timer on myself. Mr. Juvance, you had 30 more seconds, apparently. So, um, so anyway, um, they did a lovely job, and I'm, I was honored to attend, and I appreciate everyone who did attend. Also, I do want to share with you something that I got from the city of Mount Juliet. I thought you all would appreciate it. And this says, this is a note from Kitty Martin, who's the city manager over there. He says, "This is just a small note of thanks for being there when we needed it most. The selfless passion, tremendous help and friendship you provided because the March 3rd, 2020 tornado disaster our city endured will never be forgotten. If we can ever be of assistance, please don't hesitate to call upon us." And so there's a resolution, um, he sent me a copy of, and I can read it to you just really quickly. It says, "On Tuesday, March 3rd, 2020, at 12:52 a.m., a violent EF3 tornado carved its way through Mount Juliet, changing the lives of the city and its people, and three lives were lost and dozens were injured. Homes, businesses, churches, and schools were damaged, many beyond repair. While we cannot put the dollar value on the lives lost, estimated costs to replace and repair structures, vehicles, and other comforts came close to $217 million." And, "Whereas the city of Gallatin immediately came to the assistance with employees, equipment, and friendly faces. Countless hours, days, and weeks were spent with them by our sides, helping us return to a functioning city. Therefore, I, James Maness, Mayor of the City of Mount Juliet, along with my fellow commissioners, proclaim our appreciation and gr- gratitude to the city of Gallatin." So, um, that, of course, was none of us. It was our departments that were over there helping, um, Public Works, Fire Police, and we appreciate, um, we appreciate them saying thanks, but was not necessary. Glad to do it, but I thought you'd like to know about that. And that, um, is going to conclude my comments this evening, unless I've forgotten something. All right, I don't see any. Let's move along to the regular agenda then. First item is public hearing on ordinance 02105-31, and Councilman Alexander is recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. This is an order of the city of Gallatin, Summie County, Tennessee, rezoning 8.28 plus or minus acre partial tax map 126B, uh, Group B partial 002.00 from the R10 medium-density residential district to the MRO, multiple residential and office district, with a preliminary master development plan for Red River Road, uh, townhomes located northwest of the intersection of Red River Road and Long Hollow Pike, authorizing revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting , uh, ordinance, providing for severability and providing for an effective date in this public hearing.
It's a public hearing. If anyone wishes to speak on this, you may come forward at this time.
I have something I wanted to say about this item. Uh, do I have to say my names again? Michelle Juvance, 1335 Long Hollow Pike. Um, so, uh, yeah, I was kind of surprised that y'all didn't discuss, uh, the issue of that intersection of Long Hollow Pike and Red River Road. It's one of the worst intersections in the city, and this eight acres with, I guess it's now 82 instead of 86 townhouses is right on the, right there, like right on that corner. And I found it really weird that you all didn't even discuss it at all. Um, it was discussed for hours, uh, during the planning commission meetings, um, and even, uh, the commissioner, uh, the, um, chair, he, um, even came up with a roundabout solution, and this was not a, an, it was not something that they unanimous, unanimously voted yes on. Um, so just the fact that there was so much discussion at that, those meetings, and that you all didn't even talk about it at all, I found it weird. Um, during the campaign, um, we talked to a lot of people. We talked to people on Red River Road, Pascal and I, and one man told us that he takes his life in his hands every day when he gets his mail, because his mailbox is across the street from his house. Like, he lives on Red River Road and one side, and his mailbox is on the other side. So we're, like, Gallatin's changing from kind of a sleepy little town to something bigger and different than that. And we're not really doing everything that we need to do to, is, we're approving all this high density, um, without really taking into consideration things like that issue. You know, that used to be fine when there was a mailbox across Red River Road, when it's a sleepy little town without much traffic. But, you know, this is a thing that, and I did talk to, we, we did tell, um, this, the city engineer about that when we heard about it. So, you know, it's not like this is the first time that we're telling anyone about this, but you should know that there are issues on that road. That intersection is very hard to get out of most times of the day. Um, apparently, the, that roundabout solution's not a good solution because the city engineer said that, I guess, the city would have to buy both of those gas stations on that corner to make it work or something. I, I don't understand how we are approving all this high density without dealing with infrastructure issues and traffic issues and different issues that going from a small sleepy town to something that's growing very, very fast and with all that comes with that. So why didn't you discuss that at all? Is it because it's your buddy that's the developer? Like, I don't, I don't get, I don't get it. So that, I think, needs to be discussed. That needs to be talked about, because someone at the, at the planning commission meeting did say that that intersection had been talked about at council several years ago, but the can got kicked down the road and it didn't get dealt with. But it needs to be dealt with. I have to drive on that road anytime I come this way, every time I come here. Like, we have to drive that way, and I see that all the time, and it is, it is a crazy intersection. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in this public hearing, come forward at this time.
Pascal Juvance, 1335 Long Hollow Pike. Um, again, you know, growth is great, but that need to be applied where it needs to be applied, and I think 82 now townhouses on that piece of land, that that intersection should be already looked at before approving it. Um, a solution should be found on that intersection before we even approve anything going there. Uh, I think the traffic study was talking, uh, Bill, you said, 500? Something like that. Uh, 500, 500 trips a day on that intersection on top of what already exists. Um, this piece of road should be taken care of. Mayor, you, you made us aware of that letter. It was a great letter from the kid of the school, uh, asking about...
What now? I can't see that. I'm sorry. My vision is not awesome. Thank you.
Letter was published on the, on the website. It was a great letter from the kid and the elementary school, school right there, uh, was talking about sidewalks. Um, so we're gonna add more traffic on that road. There's still no sidewalks at the school, and we're gonna put more, you know, more danger there for all these people. So I think we should look at how to deal with that intersection before approving anything. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in this public hearing?
Hey, it's Patrick Reeners, 317 Malone Drive. I really don't know too much about traffic, because I haven't researched it, and I'm not gonna come up and tell y'all anything that I think, because you're a council of people. They want stuff that people know.
Mr. Reeners, this is specific to...
Yeah, to your traffic thing. I don't know about the traffic studies or whatever that's been done, but I appreciate you guys and the decision you make, with the information you have, and take no thoughts, hopes, like other people are trying to give you. This is a thing for facts, truth. You know, some people hope y'all do something, but they don't have any facts.
This is a public hearing on Red River Townhomes, since...
Right, I, I know, but people have come up, I've just heard it, and say that they believe and they think that this is a problem, you need to do something with the traffic, don't know anything about it, and, and you guys really can't reply to it, and I think someone else can, like I can. There's no rule against me saying where I think of...
You're supposed to be speaking at this time, though, about the townhome development.
Right, that's what I'm speaking about. I'm speaking about...
Even this council.
Okay. All right.
Day two. It's okay.
All right.
Anyone else on the townhome, it's on Red River? Okay, seeing no one indicating they wish to speak, I'm to declare public hearing on ordinance 02105-31 closed. Now, item number two is a first reading, and then we still have another public hearing, but because this public hearing was advertised, we were kind of forced into doing the first reading before the public hearing this evening, just so that the public is aware, um, of, of this before we actually have the public hearing. So this is first reading on ordinance 02105-30, and for it, Councilwoman Love is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance of the city of Gallatin, rezoning a two, rezoning two lots totaling .436 plus or minus acres from the Commercial General District to MRO District with preliminary master development plan for Triple Brook on four lots totaling 0, 0.865 plus or minus acres, located at 736 Northwater Avenue, authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Love, a second by Councilman Overton. Opening the floor for any discussion. First reading on ordinance 02105-30. When all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. First reading is approved unanimously. We now move on to public hearing on ordinance 02105-30, and for that, Councilwoman Love to introduce.
I'll just say ditto.
You can, you can abbreviate a little bit.
Okay, thank you again. This is an ordinance of the city of Gallatin, rezoning two lots totaling .436 plus or minus acres from Commercial General District to MRO District with a preliminary master development plan for Triple Brook on four lots totaling .865 plus or minus acres located at 736 Northwater Avenue, authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing.
And this public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on it may do so. Yeah, see no one jumping up, rushing to the podium, ready to speak. So I will declare that public hearing on ordinance 02105-30 is closed. Item number four is second reading on ordinance 02105-28. Vice Mayor Fennell.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance to provide revenue for the city of Gallatin, Tennessee, for municipal purposes for the 2021 tax year and the 2022 fiscal year. I so move.
Motion by Vice Mayor Fennell, second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion and comments? All right, this is second reading on ordinance 02105-28. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It is passed unanimously. Item number five is second reading on ordinance 02105-29. Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance 0, 02105-29, ordinance appropriating funds for civic center pool repairs, change order, and I so move.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion on this? Okay, this is second reading on ordinance 02105-29. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Second reading on ordinance 02105-29 is approved unanimously. Item number six is second reading on ordinance 02105-32. Councilwoman Love is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a second reading of an ordinance awarding bid and authorizing funds in the total amount of $1,400,000. of $1,400,000 from water sewer reserves for the water system rehabilitation contract one twenty-one, 2021. I so move.
Okay.
Motion by Councilwoman Love, second by Councilwoman George. Any discussion? This is second reading on ordinance O two one zero five dash thirty-two. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It is passed unanimously. Item seven is second reading on ordinance O two one zero five dash thirty-three. Councilman Hayes.
Yeah, this is an ordinance appropriating funds for 2021 year-end budget adjustments. Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to approve by Councilman Hayes, a second by Councilman Overton. Ms. Nichols. Vice Mayor Fennell. I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Fennell. What'd I say?
Overton.
Oh, sorry. Is this, there's adjustments to this that we need to make, an amendment that we need to make, and I'm sorry.
Yes, please. There was a copy that was left on your desktop this evening to amend that ordinance and add the item for the codes department, the employee that's retiring.
Remember, she brought it up last week and that we needed to add that because we'll have to pay out the sick time for that employee.
Motion to make the amendment.
Second.
Motion for amendment by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Overton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, it is amended. We go back to the reg, original motion, and I'll ask if there's any questions or discussion about that. All right, it's second reading on ordinance O two one zero five dash thirty-three. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It does pass as amended. Item number eight is second reading on ordinance O two one zero five dash thirty-four. Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance amended in Gallatin Municipal Code Chapter fifteen, deposit of bonds, and I so move. Second.
Motion by Councilman Overton, second by Vice Mayor Fennell. Any discussion on this, you all? No one? All right, this is second reading on ordinance O two one zero five dash thirty-four. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It is approved unanimously. Item nine is second reading on ordinance O two one zero five dash thirty-five. Vice Mayor Fennell.
This is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July the first, 2021, through June the thirtieth, 2022. Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Vice Mayor Fennell, a second by Councilman Alexander. Opening up for questions, discussion, thoughts.
Good job on the budget, Mayor.
Ms. Nichols and I did meet with Mr. Brown last week, but we're staying within the same money, so we'll be fine in that department, just some different priorities, but I was fine with what his might be, so.
Good job.
Anyone else? All right, this is second reading on ordinance O two one zero five dash thirty-five. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it is approved unanimously. Item number 10 is resolution R two one zero six dash forty-one, and Councilwoman George is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is resolution appointing blank as our fire chief and establishing initial salary. And the way we left it last week, we had two council people that didn't get to interviews. So do you have anything to add to your interviews?
Need a motion, a second to open for discussion.
Oh, sorry.
So you can say, if you wish, you can say motion for discussion or?
I would like to move for discussion.
Motion?
Second.
Second by Councilman Hayes, opening the floor for discussion. Take it away. You may leave that conversation if you wish, Ms. George.
I didn't want.
I said, you can continue with what you were saying as I interrupted you.
The last time we met, we were talking about two of our council people did not get to interview the candidates. So I would like to know if that happened and what the results are.
I, I did, and they were all very nice, easy to talk to people, and I appreciate that the council let us defer that another week. So thank you.
I had my opportunity as well. Thank you.
So now the discussion is on who this person is going to be, and we had top three candidates. And I guess perhaps the best way to do this would be to pick one and vote?
It is the will of this body how we proceed at this point. Right now, we are open for discussion, and so.
For the discussion.
A motion and a, a motion that would be a nomination would be appropriate. I do want to say that we had a terribly impressive pool of candidates. Our experts that did the, our expert panel that did the interviews for us realized that we had some very highly respected fire chiefs. We had the Fire Chief from Brentwood, the Fire Chief from Laverne, the Fire Chief from Franklin, and then we had the very experienced long-term city manager from Goodletts, still sit on that panel. They were all so impressed with the candidates that we attracted to the City of Gallatin. And I think that's something that we can all be very proud of and that we commit ourselves to setting the standard so that we can perpetuate that and continue to draw that kind of talent. We already have a fabulous group of department heads here, and so I think we all feel a responsibility to choose someone that is going to be a nice compliment for the department, of course, but also for their colleagues that they'll be working with within the city. We have some great choices, so.
I think it's very important that we choose someone that has been referred to us through that council, through that group that we, I guess, hired to come in here to look at our city and to bring the people that sent in their applications and were interviewed thoroughly and bring those in. I was very fortunate to interview all of them, and I had a, a great time with each one of them. And my only objection, objection to any of them would be a couple that had, when I asked about their plans for five years, a couple of them had said that they're, they planned to be retired by then. My opinion is that we need somebody here and as a department head that's going to lead us through another five years and further. That's my opinion of it. And I thought that we had candidates that could do that. And that's, I'd like to hear others and what you think. Anyone?
It's gonna be difficult for us to navigate this if no one's willing to discuss except Ms. George and I. Come on, folks.
I, I was impressed by everybody. I think that some of the ones that I've talked to might have higher expectations than we can actually afford to give them, but also not only for money spent in the department, but also with licensure. So that was two concerns I had about some of the people that I talked to.
Well, I'll, I'll, you know, kind of jump in here and revisit the, first of all, just for the public's benefit, I think you should know that the way that this vote happens, when we hire or fire a department head in the City of Gallatin, the mayor actually does have a vote, when, whereas the mayor typically does not and everything else. But hiring or firing a department head requires five votes from this body, including the mayor. To kind of recap what we got from our expert panel, and I told you who those people were, you know, very well-respected people within our state who, who evaluated not just the people that they did interviews with, but the applicants that were, they, they, they reviewed, I think it was eighteen candidates that met all the qualifications required by our process. So they reviewed eighteen, and then they interviewed the six candidates, I guess ultimately, because we did have one who dropped out before the process and then one that dropped out during the process. So they ranked three candidates. The top rank was a Sumner County resident, the second rank was an out-of-state resident, and the third resident was a around Memphis resident, and all people with very, very strong experience and credentials. The expert panel actually recommended the candidate from Sumner County as the best fit because their credentials were already here in the state of Tennessee, which would also be true of the person who's from the Memphis area. Experience in Tennessee fire service, that they felt like the person could easily transition in this role, and they had good knowledge of the area and had experience in a like-sized fire department. So that's what their recommendations were based upon. I feel like any of those candidates were good candidates. I definitely had a top three. Interested in anyone else?
Can I say something, Paige?
Absolutely.
I thought during the interview that we had some good candidates out there, but, you know, the expert panel did give us a listing of, what, six candidates that showed up? And the one candidate that I interviewed, of course, withdrew after my interview with her. She wasn't willing to relocate and drive an hour and something to be here. Or the other candidates that are on this list, are they willing to relocate to this area, the one, other than the one that's already living here?
The ones that I interviewed were all aware of the requirement to live in the city.
So they're willing to relocate?
They're aware, I mean, they're aware of the requirement that they live here, so I would say yes, so.
What about the financial, because with Ms.
Thank you. Ms. Flood did review with the three, top three finalists, what their salary expectations were, and they all fell with, they all fell between 120,000 and 130,000 for the top three candidates.
So their needs were not greater than what we were able to give to, for.
Depends on your perspective. So, caliber of applicants that we had, I don't think the expectation that we're looking at that range of pay is unreasonable.
For the conversation.
Just a question. From what I understand, one of the people that dropped out, dropped out because of pay. So did they understand that we would go up to 130?
There was a candidate that inquired apparently with some council members about the pay because then it was asked of me, and I told a council member that I felt like that pay was beyond what we were willing to do. That was my opinion, but.
That was more than the 130? Okay, I didn't know how much that was.
Right now, I think the highest paid department head in the City of Gallatin is the 124,5 range. So I just, I personally, I mean, I didn't tell that person to drop out. I didn't say, I just said that that was far stretch for us, I believed.
I didn't know how much they were looking for or how much.
I have in my mind 135, but maybe it was 138. I don't. So I focused on these three finalists as what their expectations were.
Eight.
Hmm? Okay, 138 was the expectation.
I'm sure we've all had lots of calls this week from citizens and from current firemen, and I know we're, we're trying to keep all, everything in mind when we make our decision, and that's kind of what's making it tough because we're trying to do the will of the people and satisfy everybody, so.
I don't know what the difference is between, of course, this is my first time doing anything like this, but at the, I know that when you're hiring somebody, that is not, that person is going to over, is going to be the leader of that department, and the people below that department usually get to choose the person who is going to lead them. That does not mean that that person wouldn't be a good fit if they did choose that, but the person that comes in that is going to lead that group should have the ability to take them to where the department needs to go. I'm really of the opinion that Gallatin, as being the county seat and where we are growing and going, we need somebody that is going to fit that caliber long-term and moving forward. And I think every one of our department heads needs to look at being in that same position and where our growth is. It's not going to stop, but it can go backwards if we do things incorrectly at every level. So I think it's an important position to fill, and I don't think it needs to be done haphazardly, but I think it needs to be done with a logical, committed, and strong leadership from this body to make the decision who that person is.
Now, I, I mean, I appreciate what you're saying, but to me, that's exactly why the process was put in place as it was, but, I don't know, was it six years ago?
It was in sixteen.
Fifteen or sixteen. So five or six years ago. You know, that's why we did that, so that we would have that expert opinion from people that likely know the candidates in their field. That's why we set it up where before, when we hired somebody with the City of Gallatin, we had what I'd like to call the, the public inquest, and they would line all the candidates up in front of this council, which I just felt like was really unfair to the candidates who wouldn't be successful. I think Mr. Hayes and I have shared opinions about the way that we hire in general, but this council has maintained their commitment to hiring as a body, and I will continue to be cooperative in that. But, you know, we have an expert panel, we had an incredible pool of talent, which we should be really proud of. I will reiterate that. To attract the talent that we attracted to this position is something we should feel good about and something that we should work to maintain for other future positions. But, so now we have recommendations and.
Before we go any further, I guess I should disclose that my son is a fireman for the City of Gallatin, but that this vote will not affect him personally or, or affect me personally or financially. Get that out of the way.
So. But it is a department that's near and dear to my heart. Of course, yes. Until we get that. But we need to put someone in this position. And would it be okay with this body if we take a name, put it into this resolution and, and vote on it? Would that be acceptable?
I am very fearful, I mean, I'm just gonna be frank here with you all, that I'm very fearful that there is not the will of the whole body to support a candidate and that we won't be able to reach five votes. And I'm telling you that because I don't, I, I think that's disrespectful to this panel. I think it's disrespectful to the candidates who applied. And if we are thinking that we're going to reopen this position, that's going to really hurt our candidate pool, I think, not just for this job, but for any future jobs that we may have. I mean, no one has jumped out there and made a nomination, which I would think if you all were enthusiastic, you would have. And I have to say, why can't we be enthusiastic with, with the quality recommendations that we have?
Could I say something, Mayor?
Absolutely. I'd welcome you to. I feel like I'm talking too much.
I guess it's a different opinion what you consider as the expert panel. In all due respect, I, I think they've done a wonderful job in the way they handle this. But to me, the expert panel is the people that's gotta work with whoever we hire in this position. And I presented a letter to this panel last week, presented to you what the firefighter themselves were saying and who they wanted, so.
Councilman Alexander, with all due respect, I just need to put on the record that that's not currently a part of the process, and if you feel that strongly, then you need to amend the process going forward to allow every department to have the same say in whoever gets hired to lead their department, because it's, it's inequitable and unfair to treat one department different than other departments.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Understood, Mayor. I said I presented the letter that was given to me, but that was not my opinion.
But you said that you thought the expert panel are the people underneath them.
It's my opinion, you know, just like you have opinion on who you think the experts should be, and I know you call this group of people that we have are from Human Resources, expert panel.
It was not from Human Resources. It was fire chiefs throughout the state that made up the expert panel.
Any way you put it, I still feel like we should listen to the voice of the firefighter. Any way you put it, I still feel like we should listen to the voice of the firefighters, because we went through this process before doing the, I guess recommending who we thought was most qualified, who we felt like was more educated and all that kind of stuff, and it failed, failed through and it worked.
But Councilman Alexander, I don't think the firefighters had exposure to the candidates beyond their interim chief, and therefore, how could they compare one to the other? You see what I'm saying?
I see, that's what you're saying.
And because we had a fire chief who departed us, does not mean that we have always been unsuccessful. In fact, if you look at the department heads that we have hired since that process was implemented, I would say that those who are sitting at that table, who were hired through that process, have been successful.
Well, it just seemed like to me, the process that we've been going through didn't work.
I will say that on other department heads, I'm sure that we've all gotten input from the employees from those departments. I've gotten lots of, I get calls for each one that we've had or that we've ever hired from people that worked in those departments.
It's never been discussed in a meeting.
Part of it, I guess.
Well, the only other area that would be similar would be the police department. Did you have the policeman call about the fire chief?
That was a long time ago. I don't know. I think that was an unusual hiring process, too, and it was done differently at that time. It was not done with the expert panel as.
But it worked.
Do we want to go forward and put a name in for nomination?
Well, if we don't go forward, what is the, what is the alternative?
Can you make a recommendation?
Absolutely, I can.
Who do you want to recommend?
I would recommend the top choice according to the expert panel.
Councilmember, make a recommendation?
Absolutely. That's what I've been asking for.
Just not on this list.
But my, my, my motion would be for the top candidate that's on that list. There's a motion, is there a second to that?
So I will put in a resolution appointing Gregory Miller as fire chief and establishing initial salary.
I will candidate in there, since y'all said I can.
But we have a motion and second right now.
A motion and a second.
Pass me up, that's all.
So is it proper to go ahead and vote on that, or how do we do it?
Well, the resolution calls for a name and a salary. And typically, when we've hired in the past, that's what we've done. We've hired the person and set the salary, and then it was voted on. And that salary would be 128,000.
128?
Okay. Now my three numbers, so, for these three. So does your second still stand?
Yes.
Vote on that, or do we discuss more with that?
Well, you can, yeah, it's open for discussion on that person. That's the current motion.
Discussion on that candidate.
I get opportunity to put my candidate in later on?
I'll tell you what, I will withdraw my motion, and you will withdraw your second, and let Councilman Alexander move forward with his.
No, no.
We can come down with a second. No, it's fine.
Everyone have a right to vote whoever you want. I thought that's what we were doing.
Well, but, but it's a situation where we're trying to get five votes to support a candidate, and so if this candidate gets five votes, you're not going to get an option, you're not going to get a choice to move forward with yours, and so I don't want to take that away from you, and so that's what I'm trying to do here. So if I withdraw my motion, will you withdraw your second? And that gives you, Councilman Alexander, an opportunity.
What I would like to see happen is that, you know, we would recommend two or three people for this position and then vote on them. Can we do it that way, or would that be out of order?
I don't know how you vote on two or three people simultaneously.
All you gotta do is say candidate number one, candidate number two, and candidate number three.
You're trying to get five.
And we'll start voting on them. Yeah, I know we're trying to get five votes, I'm aware of that.
I mean, we can do that as an exercise, and then we could make them.
I know exactly how many votes it takes to get a department head fired. I've been on here 20 something odd years, so I know that.
Okay.
Y'all act like I don't know what I'm talking about.
No, 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 no. What you're saying, let me make my suggestion. We could do that as an exercise, where we could go through the five candidates and see, and this is not the vote, it's a raise your hand, show if you are in favor of, or oppose, I guess in favor of, and then we'll go through these five candidates and see what you think. Want to do it that way? And then we can, and then we can make a motion for a resolution, and then you'll have to officially vote on it again. How do you feel about that process?
Whatever rock your boat. I'm still gonna express my opinion, and I'm still gonna nominate the person that I feel like is the best qualified for the job. So any way you want to handle that, any way you want to do that, it's fine with me.
Okay, let me ask this, is your person on the list of expert recommendations?
Not on this particular list, no.
Okay, so I would suggest that you add your person to that list, and then we will go through the exercise as I suggested.
That sounds good.
Okay.
You want to put my person out there now?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, I want to nominate.
Can we hold on just a moment before we say a name? Are you saying the person was not interviewed and didn't go through the process?
No, I was saying the person that I was going to nominate was not on the list. That was the question that the mayor asked me, was the person that I was about to nominate on this expert list, and I said no.
This recommendations, and Ms. Haumacalli is asking.
I just, as the attorney and as, serving as the risk manager, management for the city, need to remind everyone that that's not part of the, of the policy that this council adopted, and that there are certain minimum qualifications that each candidate needs to have in order to be the fire chief. And voting on someone, appointing someone who doesn't have those qualifications, so I want to do this before any names were put out there, it's not about an individual person, it is about the liability for the city, and we've discussed that at length, and I just want to put that on the record again.
Yeah, I guess I lost you. Is that liability for the city, I don't.
If we hire someone who is not qualified by our job description, and something happens in this city, the city is going to incur liability for that action. Not only that, it really destroys our hiring process throughout this city, because as I explained last week, we have job qualifications for most every position in this city, and so if at the highest level, we're not following this policy, it really undermines every department in this city when we are making hiring decisions. And the employees are going to be questioning why they were not able to be hired because they failed to meet the qualifications per position, and they could not be promoted when at the highest level, at a department head level, we are going to hire a candidate, potentially, who does not meet the job qualifications.
Ms. McColley, you're our legal advisor, but I have to disagree with you some. Our charter calls for us to hire department heads, and it doesn't call for us to hire and fire city employees, but our charter calls for us to hire and fire department heads. Is that correct?
That is correct, but there are, this is a policy, and I'm just saying it's the same, but there are job qualifications.
Let's change our charter if we need to change stuff. When we voted on that to do this policy you're talking about, it was a suggestion, okay?
It's a policy.
Okay, but, but, but our charter calls for us to hire and fire department heads, is that correct?
That is correct, and then you adopted a policy to do that.
So it's, it's, it's no difference in when we changed our charter to allow term limits and things, we had to go to the, to the legislature and change our charter. If, if everybody wants to change our charter, that's what we need to do.
No one's wanting to change the charter.
But our charter calls for us to hire and fire department heads.
That is correct.
I think she's just caution about not just the liability with.
But I think, I think her statement was on, on, on our employees, we don't have anything to do with hiring and firing employees. We have nothing to do with hiring and firing, all we have control over is department heads, and that's it. Our department heads hire and fire employees, and they do their own.
Right, but they follow policy.
Whatever process they go through.
They follow policy.
But we don't do that, we just hire and fire department heads.
She's doing that as an example, and, you know, and only three of us are on here when we put this in place, and all three of us voted for that.
And I, and I, like I just said, it was a recommendation that we go through a process to this magnitude, but nobody said that this is mandatory, that you have to do this, that we're changing our charter, anything else.
But then why did you vote on it? Is what I'm saying.
Hey Craig, I don't have a problem with going through a process sometimes, but the ultimate decision has to lie with us. We're elected to do that, and it lies with us, and I'm doing what I need to be doing.
And it's my recommendation that this council, if you, if you don't like that policy and you don't intend to follow it, you need to repeal that policy.
And I'm okay with that, too. I'm okay with putting that on the council committee and doing that as well.
Does anybody have any aspirin? I mean, I really got a bad headache, I'm really.
I wish I had some, Sean, I'd give them to you.
Do you have any, Linda?
Okay. So how are we proceeding at this point? I mean, I, I, I feel, I think Councilman Alexander wanted to put forth the nomination. I feel like I, you know, aligned very strongly with the legal counsel for a lot of reasons, but, but, you know, I think about our city, and I think about how our city looks to the public, and I think about, you know, what our employees want, what our fellow department heads want, and, and we are building just such a tremendous community, and those serving that community are our city workforce.
And Mary, that's true, I mean, I agree with you 100%. I think our department heads and our, and our city employees means a lot to us, and that's why some of us are listening to what our city employees and all desire, and I have to agree. That's what they're designing.
And I just want to put on the record that I'm not saying, anything that I'm saying out of disrespect to any person, this is not personal to me, this is a business decision. You hired me to be the legal counsel and to give you advice, and that's, that's what I'm doing.
I understand, totally.
Well, and, and I, I mean, you all have mentioned that you've gotten phone calls and stuff, and I have gotten very, very few, and.
Because, because they know where you stand, ma'am, so there's no reason to call you.
Why are they calling you all when you have exhibited your support in a direction as well? You know, it doesn't make sense that.
Well, it's, it's just like, it's just like when you're, when you're dealing with a subdivision or something on annexation, you know, all the people that supports it call us, but the negative people, there's only a very, very few people that come out in, in public, so, you know, they, they don't come out here in public and state that, so, and, and everybody knows in public that you've publicly supported and who you publicly supported, so.
But I, but I've seen lots of people lobby knowing that you're on an, that I say the, the general you, not you, Councilman Overton, but I, I've seen lots of people lobby when they know where someone stands on a position, and honestly, I am okay with several of these candidates. So I don't have a position, so I really don't think it's fair to assume that I have a candidate. And I've, you know, like I said, I've heard very, very few comments. I did see, asked Ms. Kittle to share with me last week, the petition that was sent that was addressed to the mayor, although I never received it, and it did have like 20 something names on it, but, you know, it, what about the other 60 something that work in the department? Where are they? I don't know, and that's why when you're hiring, you're not polling your employees to say, who would you like to be your boss? I just, I've never been asked that question in my employment history.
I think Paige, that they're not family calling you because maybe they didn't realize that you have a vote, for one thing, and the ones.
But now what, I'm sorry.
That you had a vote on this.
Potentially.
And also, the ones that I'm getting phone calls from mostly were saying that they didn't want their name publicly put out, because they're afraid of, you know, what might happen along down the road. So I think that's the reason.
I haven't received any phone calls.
My, well, maybe because.
John, you go make a recommendation.
They're gonna arrest me if I make a recommendation.
They're gonna arrest you, you know what you said?
I'm not going to jail tonight.
I'm not arresting anybody.
I hope no one's going to jail.
Thank you, I appreciate you. So what we need to do then, just defer this until we get some more?
No, we, I mean, another thing I'll say is that we have 41 candidates that applied for a job, and it is not fair for them to be sitting around wondering what the heck the Gallatin City Council's gonna do. I don't feel good about deferring it at all.
It's not good for anybody, not even for the firemen. They need to know who their leader is.
I hate to publicly explain reservations on certain people, person, because that's could be embarrassing.
Any candidate that you hire has potential what-ifs. I mean, that's, and, and what-ifs could be something that you don't even imagine, but, I mean, that's again, why we use the process, so that you have experts saying, these are phenomenal candidates, here are six, five recommendations, they are all strong, they would all do your city well, and they'd be proud to work with them. I'm gonna suggest that we move forward with the exercise that I proposed, where we go through the candidates and see who would be supportive of each, and we'll do them by the ranking that's on the sheet, and we'll start with number six?
This would be hard, though, because we're, I mean, we're not saying out of all these candidates, it, it comes down to one at a time, really, when we.
What I'm suggesting is that I go down this list, and I see if we have five people in support of any candidate, and I would hope that we would. I'm gonna be very embarrassed if we don't.
I'm gonna be very embarrassed if I don't get to put my candidate on the list, so we'd have seven on there instead of six.
Only five.
Five.
No one's keeping you from putting a candidate on the list. Ms. Haumacalli is advising us all from a legal perspective.
Right.
Should have tremendous merit.
I might vote for two or three, depending on who it was.
That's fine, that's fine. I mean, as, as I'm talking about trying to do this exercise to move this process along, you would have that option.
So do we want to go from the bottom up? Okay. All right, so I'll.
Is John Lee's candidate on there?
Ain't put on there yet. I'm watching the chief's, chief out, I've got a priest tomorrow, I don't want to go to jail tonight, please. Okay.
You want to add your candidate before you go through that exercise?
I would like to. If that's proper, if it's not proper, y'all tell me, I don't want to go to jail, I keep telling you.
I don't think, it's, it's not illegal, so I don't think you have to worry about going to jail.
There you go.
Put, put my candidate on the list, if you would, please, Mr. Tracy Townsend. Put that on this for me. I heard what they said, I would not be arrested. All these people I hear is my witness.
I'm not gonna arrest you, as long as you keep behaving.
So do you want me to start with that, going, okay. Resolution, appointing.
I, I was just gonna do as I suggested, where we just say, okay, candidate number six, who would be supportive of it? You want me to do it?
Sure.
Okay, candidate number six, who would be supportive? Raise your hand.
Give the name.
I don't know who number six is.
I don't all have them.
I, I handed the list out tonight.
I've got.
And so number six would be the candidate that he added. And then you would have five, four, three, two, one.
Okay, I've got you now.
Okay, so on candidate six, who would be supportive, raise your hand, please.
I'd like to say something here, I'd like to interview candidate number six before I vote.
So you want to defer it till? Pardon?
Candidate number five.
Hold up, ma'am, you got to let him speak.
Oh, I thought that was just a comment, sorry.
I said I'd like to interview candidate number six before I vote for or against him, I don't know if I'd want him or not.
Defer until?
No, can't, we're going through this process, as I told you. No, can't, um, we're going through this process as I told you, um.
Yeah, we did give two of the council persons a chance to interview some candidate. It's on the fact that we have a chance to-
But realize, we had 41 candidates on that list, and if we're going to-
I realize that, but he made a request to interview the candidate before he voted for the person. I don't, I don't see what's wrong with that. We done it for the other two, we should do it for him as well.
But he wasn't an interviewed ca- he wasn't a candidate according to the process that we prescribed.
I'm assuming nobody interviewed him, correct?
Huh? Right, nobody interviewed him, he wasn't interviewed. Um, let me finish down this list and see where we are, okay? Candidate number five, who would be supportive? I see no one indicating that they would. Candidate number four, would you be supportive? Candidate number three, would you be supportive? I would.
I would too.
I don't know.
Oh. I mean, can you vote twice?
Yes, as many times as you want.
Yeah, I think so too.
Got more than five.
Three, we had more than five, okay. Candidate number two?
Are we voting one?
Be supportive? No, 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 we are not voting. We're doing an exercise to see who might have support for, um,
Are we narrowing it down, basically?
Potentially, yeah, yeah. So, um, so candidate number two, who would be supportive of him? I, I, I could be supportive of him. I could.
Which one wouldn't work for me.
Um, so I'm not saying that there are five people, I think Ms. George has said she could be, Ms. Love has said she could be, and there's nothing from the four of you. So, and I said I could be, so that would be three. Um, candidate number one, I could be supportive of definitely. Two, three.
I could possibly be.
Four.
Five.
You did interview him, Mr. Fan.
Are we going off the rank or the score?
Candidate number one.
It's candidate number one, okay.
That's one, two, three, four.
Raise your hand.
Fan raised his hand. Oh, you did raise your hand on one. Okay, so that's five also.
That don't mean we have to vote it when it comes back around.
Pardon me?
It don't mean that we have to stick with voting out of it.
No, you're not.
Eliminating, I think. Aren't you eliminating some?
I'm really just trying to get a sense of, is there somebody here that we can potentially hire? I, I have three candidates that I think would be great for Gallatin Tire Department.
Okay, whittle it down. What, who got the most? Let's just-
Well, we have two that y'all sat right here and said that you could potentially support. That'd be candidate number three and candidate number one.
Then support or vote for?
I'm saying-
Whoever we put in.
Yeah, but we gotta get somebody put in. I think she's mean, would you vote for him?
Pardon?
Would you vote for the person?
We got three candidates out there that, that passed the straw poll, correct?
Two.
What happened with, um, Councilman Alexander's person?
At four.
I'm gonna withdraw, I wanna mind to keep him in the race.
Well, it doesn't matter, we have to have five.
Did everybody understand what we were doing at that point?
Yes.
Okay, we have to have five votes to hire a department head. And so what we were trying to do is ascertain where we might have five votes to support one of the candidates. We included Councilman Alexander's recommendation in that list. There were only four votes indicated. There were none for candidates five and four. There were what looked like five or more for candidate number three. There were three for candidate number two, and there were five for candidate number one. So that's essentially the summary.
You know, thi- this is, this is not going anywhere. Um, let somebody plug a name in, and let's see how it goes, and let's just go. Let's quit doing this Mickey Mouse stuff and let's just go, let's go. Plug a couple of names in, let's go.
Let me ask you this, Ms. Hyma Colley. If we were to put a candidate in here and it did not pass, does that kill it forever, or can we bring it back up if we need to?
I guess you could.
Okay. So Ms. George, you wanna go back to your motion?
Yes.
Resolution number 2106 dash 41. Resolution appointing Gregory Miller as fire chief and establishing initial salary of $128,000. I so move.
Motion by Councilwoman George, second by me. Opening the floor for discussion. And when I ask that, all in favor of that, please say aye.
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 Aye. We have three ayes, correct? Okay, so the motion will not pass. So the other one that we had, um, a potential five or greater four was for candidate number three, and that's William Jeff Beaman. I'll make that motion, that we hire him. The salary that he, um, was requesting is $125,000.
Okay, you want me to put that in?
That's my motion.
I second.
Okay, thank you. Motion by me, second by Councilwoman George. Opening the floor for discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Agree. Okay, council, you're doing something that I am quite unhappy with. I mean, we're not discussing any of the candidates, we're not, um,
I guess I just don't-
How, how do we move forward?
You can't, I mean, you can't get mad about it.
I'm not mad, I'm really not mad, but I'm frustrated because-
We gotta move on to the next one, okay?
Exactly.
We gotta move on.
We're not gonna-
Gotta move on. It don't, it don't matter. If it, we don't get there, we don't get there. What, what can you do about it?
You had three candidates on there, you voted for two, now why are you not gonna vote for the third one?
Somebody make a motion.
Yeah, I mean.
This is the one we just voted on that I didn't vote on. Was that the guy from Germantown?
Yes.
I'll, I'll, I'll support him.
That would be four for him.
Huh? Do we need to do roll call votes on these? Potentially, but we're not really there, so.
That's four, so, okay.
What's the next one?
Next one.
Which one, what's the four?
Six is the next one.
Three.
The guy from Germantown.
I'm sorry, I'm lost. No, you don't, you don't have to do anything, Ms. George, I mean.
Just waiting for the next candidate to vote on.
Who's making a motion?
We already had number three. Uh, I'll make motion number six then. Make motion that we, uh, hire number six.
Motion by Councilman Alexander.
Second.
Second by Councilman Overton. Opening the floor for discussion. I'll just say-
What is this going to do for us?
I think we're voting on it.
That's what it's gonna do for us.
Right, but what is this gonna do for us as far as, uh, litigation and all of the things that we've been going through?
ISO, attracting talent, respect for department heads, respect for other employees, it seriously concerns me.
Why we gotta see attorney?
We get it.
Some things I can't defend, sorry. You have a motion, a second, anyone else wishing to discuss further? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I have four. Roll call vote, Ms. Alexander.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Aye.
Councilman Alexander.
Aye.
Councilman Fan.
Who are we voting on now, let me make sure?
Tracy Townsend.
abstained because I haven't interviewed you.
Councilwoman George?
No.
Councilman Hayes?
No.
Councilwoman Love?
I haven't interviewed him either, but I'm gonna vote yes.
Councilman Overton?
Yes.
And the mayor votes on this as well?
Mayor Brown?
No.
All right, Mayor, I have-
We're in four.
Four, yeah, four a's and, three nays and one abstention.
We should have a roll call vote for the others since we had it without one, yeah.
I think we should just defer and get our thoughts together and let's go to the next one, get this over with. Too much confusion. What's the next thing? We got one more item on the agenda.
Did that last vote mean that Tracy Townsend was out of it?
Four.
We have not, to hire a candidate, you must have five votes.
Four.
So, can we go to number 11?
11?
Yes, 11 on the agenda.
Oh, item number 11 on the agenda. No, I'm, I'm still focused on us trying to hire a fire chief.
We done voted and we hung up on it. Why do you keep?
So what's, happens?
Well, I think this council needs to work together to figure out who they can get behind and get five votes for. And I think you all need to discuss it. I mean, I, I've been really open. I've said I've got three candidates I'm okay with, so. So-
Meanwhile, while we're waiting, uh, give Mr. Steve Fan a chance to, uh, interview the candidate that he needs to interview. And let's go on to the next one. Then bring this back up next time. Cause he said he hadn't interviewed him, right?
No one's interviewed him. No one has. He wasn't a qualified candidate, so he was not interviewed.
Not going to number 11, is that what you're saying?
Well, I thi- I don't think we can just halt an item. I think there needs to be a formal motion to defer. Is that correct?
There's not enough votes, we don't have a choice.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Overton. Second by Councilman Alexander.
Can I speak on?
No, 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 no.
I just don't understand. So is that number six candidate then not in the running at all now? I mean, since we voted no.
Didn't vote no. The goal was to get five yeses, so.
We got a motion on the floor to defer. And a second, we need to vote on that.
Yes, we do need to vote on that. Yes. All in favor of deferring, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right. I don't get to vote on that piece of it, I guess.
Number 11.
Um, I just want to say before we do move on to 11, I know you want to move along, um, I fear that we're gonna lose some really quality candidates, uh,
This is very unfair to the people that have been waiting now for at least two weeks.
They were gonna lose some very important, uh, employees. Let's just go on to number 11, please.
I'm very concerned with that too, Councilman Alexander, as we all should be. Item number 11 is resolution R2106 dash 43, and Councilman Hayes is recognized.
Yeah, this is a resolution of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, supporting a notice of intent to file an application applying for a congestion mitigation and air quality grant from the Tennessee Department of Transportation for the development of transportation improvements that will result in the reduction of vehicle emissions in the city of Gallatin. Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Councilman Overton. Um, Mr. Tuttle or Mr. McCord, did you guys wanna update the call?
I'm the spokesman of the group, I suppose. Drew the short stick.
Nice long winded this, Mr. McCord. Councilman Alexander particularly would appreciate that right now.
Mr. McCord, Rachel Nichols, and several of our staff members met together for probably about two and a half, three hours today and discussed, um, the CMAC grant, um, application here, as well as another potential application that we would want to put together, uh, over the next couple of weeks. And so I'm gonna try to summarize this as well as I can, uh, but at the end of the day, uh, the, the big takeaway, uh, so I'll, I'll start with the big takeaway, and then I'll try to, to whittle it down and come back to the big takeaway. So, uh, there are, there are several opportunities that we believe that we have to apply for a grant that would be at 80/20. Um, so 80% federal dollars, 20% local dollars. Uh, those grants can be used for a lot of different things. We've used CMAC grants in the past for sidewalk projects, uh, for our, our, um, traffic signal coordination projects that we have going on right now. We've, we have two of those that are, um, in the works. Uh, and then, uh, greenway trails, um, or other types of various intersection improvements. And so, uh, what we felt like, uh, the, the best potential, uh, things for us to do is to try to put together several opportunities for the city to get a grant at an 80/20 match. Uh, and so the big question for us here tonight is, how much money do we want to, as a city, uh, maybe obligate ourselves to, uh, for various intersection improvements? How much money do we want to obligate ourselves, uh, to for sidewalk improvements? And the reason why, uh, we, we as a group thought it wasn't a very good, um, use of the money to, uh, to go for any kind of greenway trail improvement is something that we want to talk about next week. Uh, and that is, uh, we feel like the COVID-19 pandemic relief funds that are gonna be made available to us are gonna fit that category much better. Uh, and, and the three targets that we had for, for those, I'll go ahead and throw them out so that we can, um, talk about it a little bit more next week. But, um, we actually already have two applications in for, for, um, uh, greenway trails. One is for greenway trail that would stretch across the, the frontage of Volunteer State Community College. And then the other one, um, extends that beyond Volunteer State Community College, basically through, uh, the, the Kennesaw Farm subdivision all the way down to Nat Caldwell Park. Uh, we're hopeful that we get those grants, but we're, we don't know. Um, so, uh, the, the other grant, uh, or potential opportunity that we thought from a greenway perspective was to go along with the Lock 4 Trail. Um, in the, the previous award that we got, there was about a $300,000 bill that was gonna come due, uh, that wouldn't, um, cover the, uh, the culvert replacement down there towards the end. And we feel like that's a really good use of COVID relief funds. And so, we're gonna come to you next week, talk about that just a little bit more, but we feel like we wanted to go ahead and throw those out and say that we didn't think that they were the best for the CMAC funds, but best for the COVID, uh, funds, and, and, and wanted to, to look at that, uh, next week. So, uh, back to the CMAC money, uh, and, and what we feel like is, is the best thing for us, uh, to apply for there. Again, 80/20, uh, and so, you know, the question is, again, how much money do we want to, to put forward, uh, into maybe further developing our, our sidewalk, uh, program, and then further developing our, our various intersection, um, improvement program. And the, and the other little minor thing that we thought, um, would be a good opportunity for us to, to get a grant would be, um, dealing with pedestrian signalization improvements, uh, and, and which would go along with, with adding some, some ADA upgrades to our signalized intersections. Uh, and we actually felt like that we, we would like for you to, to allow us to make an application in that way. Uh, but we feel like that the funding for that can be taken out of funding that we already have that's available for our ADA upgrades that we've already committed to on an annual basis to say, we're, we're moving forward to, uh, comply with ADA, um, and this is the amount of money that we're putting towards it. We feel like leveraging, you know, an 80/20 grant application would, would take that ADA compliance money a lot further. Uh, so, uh, breaking down, uh, the, the other two pots, uh, the various intersection improvements, and then the sidewalk, um, improvements, the, the citywide sidewalk. The big things that we thought, uh, for those categories, um, if we talk about intersection improvements, we had, we had a list, but we don't believe that, that this is, is comprehensive, and we want to include as many things uh, in this list as possible, uh, and then have you guys say, this is the amount of money that we would be willing to spend to go towards these kinds of improvements. Um, but, um, a couple of things that we actually applied for previously on a CMAC grant uh, were improvements to add right turn lanes, um, in a couple of different locations. Uh, one would be at the intersection of, of Cages Bend and Nashville Pike. Uh, a couple of right turn lanes there at that intersection. Uh, another would be at the intersection of, uh, Nashville Pike and, and 109, where the interchange meets up with the Kroger, uh, right there.
I've asked her about that one so much.
So that would be, uh, you know, a right turn lane that would turn into, uh, to go to Starbucks. Uh, that's, that's what my wife would call it. Uh, so, uh, she would like that one very much. Uh, so, so that's a, those are a couple that we, we had in a previous grant application that we did not get. Uh, some others would be, um, mast arm upgrades at intersections where we only have the span poles, or the strain poles and the span wires converting- or the strain poles and the span wires converting them to a metal mast arm. And so those intersections would be intersections like Southwater and Maple Street, 109 at State Route 25, which we recently annexed. Maple Street at Hancock would be a timing update, detection and cabinet upgrade. Nashville Pike at Belvedere, Nashville Pike at Gap Boulevard, Nashville Pike at Gallatin Plaza. And then we have some other upgrade detections, and then various cabinet improvements. So those are the kinds of improvements that we're looking for. We do think that there are some other intersections that we think that some right turn lane additions would be appropriate. But that's the kind of stuff we're talking about for that. And so the question would be to the council, you know, how much money would we be able to or be willing to commit to projects of that nature? And the other would be our sidewalk program, which I think you guys may have a more interest in, a little bit more tangible. And a couple of things that really jump off the picture or jump off the page to us are projects that we had funded in a grant application before, but because of recisions and things of that nature, we lost that funding for those. And those were the sidewalk project on Coles Ferry Road, which Councilman Camp was always supportive of and very interested in. And that would be along Coles Ferry Road from Southwater Avenue to Airport Road. The other project that was in a previous grant award was on North Boyers Avenue, and that is right there along the frontage of RT Fisher. I forgot what it was called there for a second. It was Venus Stewart, now it's RT Fisher Elementary School. Not Elementary School, it was Venus Stewart Elementary School, now it's the alternative school. But those were the two sidewalks that we had in the previous grant funds. We have other sidewalks that we feel like would be great candidates, especially if we're talking about big cost type sidewalks, such as East Eastland Street along that neighborhood. Northwestland Street, something that would connect from Main Street all the way to the end of Northwestland. Long Hollow Pike, which we've talked about a number of times. And really, this could be a project that would go from North Belvedere Drive all the way back to Red River Road, and potentially further, if the grant funding would allow. And then to really connect to that would be a project on North Belvedere that would go from Long Hollow Pike back to our existing sidewalk construction that we have just past the railroad tracks. You know, all these places are places that we see people walk constantly. Another one that I forgot that was at the bottom of the list here was East Main Street on the city section of it. It's a good question as to how far we would take that. But again, another place where we have a lot of pedestrian activity already, and these are along major corridors, whether they be a minor arterial, major arterial, or collector. And those were things that were very important for us as we tried to look to put this list together. Now, there could be other projects that you are interested in from a sidewalk perspective that could be added to this list. And I think, you know, we can put as much as we want to on this list right now and start whittling that list down later. And so if there's something that you guys have that jumps off, you know, the top of your head, that's fine if you want to throw that in there now. Or if you just want to try to give us a call later and be something that we add. I think the key thing here right now is that we identify an amount of money that we're willing to put up as a match for projects like this.
So Mayor, will you and Ms. Nichols make a recommendation of what y'all feel comfortable with?
What they talked about today, you were looking at $500,000 for each. And I told Nick that my initial thought was that we should go a little higher. Realize if we go $2 million, that's $400,000. We're going to be paying millions.
We all want to go, we all want to get as much as we can, so I mean, we're going to leave that up to you, Ms. Nichols, as far as how much I think we can afford.
Another thing that I fear is with all of this Rescue Act money coming down to all the various entities, the counties and the schools and the cities and the states, that we're really going to get into a jam where we can't get work done and the cost of services and goods goes sky high, so.
Because we have to have these projects committed to or built.
Well, yeah, I was going to, one thing to take into consideration, I mentioned this to the mayor. You know, we won't know, the awards for these projects won't be until close to the end of the year. It'll take us probably three, four months to get under contract with TDI so that we can manage these projects as local program projects. We won't have a consultant onboard until this time next year at best. So we're not even going to begin design on these kinds of projects until a year from now. So the money that we're committing to or saying that we would be willing to put up is not going to even be, start being spent until in the next budget year, 2022, 2023.
But I think considering all the improvements that need to happen, I don't think $2 million is out of line, but I'm going to look at Ms. Nichols.
Yeah, the conversation that we had, and Rachel, you can definitely step up here, but the conversation that we had was, we felt like, you know, again, 80/20. So if we were to, the combination of the sidewalk and the various intersection improvements, if we were to put $5 million together with that, our portion would be $1 million. So that $1 million price tag for us, getting $4 million from the federal government to leverage.
Are you saying you want to go higher? I mean, oh, well, why'd you tell me a million earlier? I was trying not to be ridiculous.
A million was our part.
Oh, oh, okay, yeah, I'm fine with that. I'm entirely fine with that. Yeah, I was misunderstanding. I was thinking, that's not a lot of money.
Yeah, I was saying, I was meaning $500,000 our share for sidewalks, $500,000 our share
Perfect.
for various intersection improvements, which gets us to $1 million for our share, which is $5 million for the total grant.
I think the council needs to get all we can get, but we just want to be sure that, you know, we're managing our money right.
If she says that's okay, that's good. I think this is a good opportunity for me to publicly, again, bring up something that I keep bringing up to Nick. But I really want the city, and we had a very popular social media post about sidewalks over the weekend. But I really think that there is an opportunity for us to launch some kind of sidewalk program whereby, Mr.
Joe DeBoer.
Thank you. Mr. DeBoer. I almost called you Mr. McCord. Mr. DeBoer, I've said to you before, where, so in my mind, the way the street program project could work is you get everybody on your street to agree to give us the right of way for a sidewalk, we're putting a sidewalk in. Well, I mean, within a certain allowance of funds. Because the thing that gets us so upside down with trying to do sidewalks is people that don't want them and the cost of buying that right of way. And so if you can get, if you have a neighborhood street that makes sense for a sidewalk, and you can get your neighbors to agree to one, that's great for our city.
Yeah.
And so I don't know how we're going to market it and how we're going to launch it, but yeah, I'm game. I told you, you could go first.
Nick, when you're talking about Long Hollow, are you talking about along, somewhere along in front of Howard School?
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am. So it would be, well, the limits that I mentioned was Red River Road to North Belvedere Drive.
I think 109.
109 is.
At this point.
The reason why I took it to Belvedere was because I believe making that connection to Belvedere and having a sidewalk go down Belvedere as well. But 109 actually does have a sidewalk at the interchange, so you could have a logical termini there. That would be fine, and then look at the other piece that goes to Belvedere at a later time.
Mr. Alexander's wanted that for a long time, hasn't he, Mr. Alexander?
Well, I just look at those apartments, this side of the bypass, and I don't, I mean, putting a sidewalk on the other side of the roads because that ditch is really hard, right?
Right. We believe that, yeah, the south side, the Howard side of the roadway would be the most logical and easily constructed side to work with.
Then you could potentially put a crosswalk where there's typically a crossing guard for the students.
Right, and, you know, one of the reasons that, and the state has kind of striped a crosswalk there, but there are no other pedestrian facilities to it on either side.
And you see a lot of people walking in the ditches there.
We would be able to try to actually put a legal crosswalk in, and something that, you know, has some sort of a pedestrian, what we're doing at the end of Hancock Street, a little pedestrian plaza, or something where they can cross to. And then from there, you know, they will walk probably on the side of the road or ditch or something like that until we can get into the neighborhoods, which is, you know, I think one of the students there at Howard was asking about. And, you know, we feel like we need to start on our major roads, make sure that we can safely get pedestrians on these collectors.
It's a lot safer to walk on neighborhood streets than it is Long Hollow.
Correct.
Or, you know.
And the statistics for, if a pedestrian is hit, God forbid, at 25, 30 miles per hour, you know, there's a 70, 80% chance to survive that kind of hit. If you get 35, 40 miles per hour, it flips if you're hit as a pedestrian and a car moving that fast. And so it doesn't make a big difference when you've got higher speeds. And just that 10 miles per hour difference right there between 25 and 35 miles per hour is huge.
Right.
So, so those are the kinds of roads that we focused on, and that's why we brought this list like we did. So, the question tonight is, you do have a resolution before you that has some blanks to be filled in. So what we need from you at this time is to have those blanks filled in and the resolution voted on so that we can make this application next week, because we don't have another council meeting before this letter of intent is due. Now, we can't have more conversations because we won't actually have the final grant application completed. So if we think, if we look at this in two, three weeks and say, this is just too much money, or we want to add this project, or whatever the thought is, we can modify our application. So we just need a resolution right now so that the state understands.
So what you're asking for is $4 million in congestion mitigation funds with estimated $5 million project with the city responsible for an estimated $1 million, correct?
That is almost correct. The only one thing that you didn't mention was the pedestrian, the ADA and pedestrian things, which I mentioned that, but it was very briefly. And so we felt like, and I don't think I mentioned the number. I think I may have mentioned $100,000 is our share there, but we felt like a $500,000 investment for those ADA and PET upgrades in our downtown area would go a long way.
What numbers should be filled in here, Mr. Tuttle?
So altogether, this would be the last line here where it says, whereas the council hereby approves applying for up to, I feel like that number should be 5.5 million.
Okay.
In congestion mitigation and air quality grant funds from the Tennessee Department of Transportation.
For a $6.5 million project?
No, I guess that depends on how you read that. The way that the state and feds would read that is, that first number is.
Yeah, I thought the first number was the, was the CMAC funds. I think the first number should be the CMAC funds, the second number should be the total project, and the third number should be the city's portion. That's what I think it reads.
$4 million, $5 million, $1 million.
Okay. The number.
No, that doesn't have the ADA piece in it, right, Ms. Nichols? So it would be 4.5, 5.5?
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
There is one more blank.
And that's just saying sidewalks and.
That's just saying the types of projects, yes, ma'am.
And intersection.
It would be various intersection improvements would be the first type of sidewalks. The second would be a citywide sidewalk improvements. And then the third would be those pedestrian synchronization, ADA compliance upgrades. And I can pass that to you, just to make sure that you have that. So that's the last blank that would need to be filled in.
I have a motion and a second. Do you agree with that addition for that last one?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
All right. So you have a motion and a second. Any discussion on it? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Resolution R2106-43 does pass unanimously. That concludes the regular agenda, bringing us now to other business. And I would open the floor to this.
And by the way, for the public's interest, all those will be approved once, if we get any of those, they'll all be approved down the road, so.
Any other business from this council? All right, seeing none, we'll go to public recognition on non-agenda related items. If there's anyone here this evening that would like to speak, has to be on an item that was not on the evening's agenda. You may come forward and do so at this time. Yes, that you introduce yourself, give us your address, and you'll have five minutes.
My name, good evening. My name is Shirley Persley, and I live at 1278 Woods Ferry Road here in Gallatin. And I'm just before you for a couple of minutes to talk about something that was brought up last week when Mr. Alexander mentioned improvements for the Clearview Park community. Some of you made it very clear how you were so dead set against this. You know, talking about things for kids to use the restroom, run up to the shalone zone and do it. Shalone zone's not set up for that. And you let a couple of more guys go in the shalone zone looking for the restroom. I guarantee you, one of them will be shot. So that wasn't a good idea. Nor was it a good idea to say, let them go out to the civic center. Some of us go to the civic center, but everybody in the Clearview community, and not only that, but there are some other communities. Everybody can't go to the civic center. I'm a member there, but if I had several friends, I couldn't just take them out there and said, okay, come on, just go in here and do what you want. It's not set up for that. So I think you should be, you know, you should give more consideration to trying to improve the Clearview community. We talked about the building. I don't remember the dimension of the building, but I do know that lumber is quite a bit higher now than it was, say, 18 months ago. Okay, if it's going to cost so much that we just can't afford it, and it's hard for me to believe that we couldn't afford something because no matter what has come up in the past few years that I've attended these meetings, money has come from somewhere to get these things done, all this side of the track. But I think that whatever the dimensions of the building, cut it down. If you, you know, make it smaller, but make it decent. I feel that the people that live in the Clearview community should be treated fairly. None of you need their votes, other probably John, so they don't matter to you. But the same God that made all of you made them, and we should consider that. We talked about the way the building would be used. There are people in that community that have different meetings that they could use it for. It could definitely be used for family reunions and other type meetings that we could use it for. One thing that I do attend every year, maybe near the end of August, a lot of people, those that are still living, from 1924 class in Union High on through 1970, all different states, they somehow make their way back to Gallatin and go over there that Friday for food, fun, and conversation. And I just think that we could be more considerate about the people in Clearview Park community. I don't know this for sure, but I've been told that on July 1, they're going to have to pay $16 for their trash also, just like the rest of us. And some of them's taxes, you know, they have to pay some. I don't know what they pay. They don't pay as much as I do, but they pay something. And I just think that they should be considered to have a better program going for the Clearview community. It's just time for all of you that run the city and to make the important decisions, you know, realize that we too, and the people across the track, are human, and they deserve far more consideration than what they get. I know John tries, but I know also that John probably hates to leave his home sometime because people jumping on him, he can't get nothing done. That's all you hear. John can't do nothing. John is just one amongst all of you. I think that he tries. I've been here and I've heard him try. I don't know all that the young man was talking about with the sidewalks and everything, but I do know if we got $100 million. I do know if we got $100 million, I guarantee you, Anthony Street and those places over in the Clearview community would not get sidewalks, because all these years have passed, and they still don't have them. And there are some older people over there that's still able to walk, but they can't get out there in the street and walk. But if they had a sidewalk, it would help. I think I should stop at this point. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, city. My name is Patrick Reeners of 317 Malone Drive. And, you know, I've learned a lot in the city. I've been here since 98. I lived on 31E. I lived on West Winchester for a year, and now I bought a house in 2006 in Malone Drive. And I've seen a lot in the city, and I know that everyone has just won this council, and people are going to come into issues that they can't make decisions on fully, and that's why you guys can talk to each other. But I think there's another issue at hand. I think that this council has a right to amend any of their charter to make their own decisions, because like other people might have said, that, you know, you could lose employees making a certain decision. You know, certain employees trust people. And I know the public doesn't have all that information, but as far as I'm concerned, I don't think this council should have to listen to false information at the pedestal. I think that you guys have a right under Avers, Avers v. Florida, to use a viewpoint-neutral subject and restrict it. The First Amendment is a great thing we got. And I'll be the first one to say I fight for constitutional rights, but I'm the first one to step up with people that abuse them. Anybody. Viewpoint neutral. And my roommate's black, so I ain't hating on black people or any race. So, at the point of bringing up false information, I got a notarized complaint that I got today that I'm going to go ahead and file with Ethics Commission, because I heard there might be an issue with the city officer Susan not having jurisdiction over people running that break ethics violations. So, what I'm going to do is present it to you guys tonight, and I know it'll be available to the public.
Mr. Reeners, I don't know where you're going, but I'm going to caution you not to name any individuals.
I'm not naming no names. No, I'm just going to pass this out, and the individuals or individual involved can do a public record request with that's his commission, and we'll go that route with it. So, you guys have a good night, and I'm neutral. I'm not on any side of the fence with the right side.
Mr. Reeners, anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on non-agenda-related items this evening?
I had a headache.
Come here. I bet you'd make it up there and speak before he's ready.
My name's Ellen Duffer. I live at 395 Devon Chase Hill here in Gallatin. Some of you may recognize me from six years ago, when I was up here with Lennox Place. It was my new home at that time. And not here for that reason today, and I was just going to start coming to meetings because I'm interested in what's going on in Gallatin. 12 years ago, I decided to make Gallatin my home. Up until two years ago, I've been taking care of my mom full-time, who died a couple of years ago. And I chose at 12 years ago to come and help her out and take care of her, so that we could keep her home her last years. My parents built a home here 55 years ago and decided to retire after the Air Force here. So, that's how I ended up in Gallatin. But we're not going to say anything, like I said, but just wanted to go ahead and come up and mention that I'm really, really concerned about the growth that I've seen approved through this council for the city that I thought that I was moving to 12 years ago. I see things on our Facebook group, we have a community Facebook page that occasionally talks about issues going on in the city, although we're not allowed to talk about too many political things on that page. Something was brought up this week about the $4, excuse me, was it $4, $3 increase in the sewer fees. We pay homeowners fees at Lennox Place. We are, I forgot to mention, the only senior citizen residential, we own our own condos at Lennox Place. So, we are the only senior facility here in Gallatin, and we have 247 units, that's something like maybe, what, 400 votes? But the community is concerned about increases. Usually, I mean, most people that are 55 and above are okay these days with that $4 increase a month for their sewer, you know, that $4 that you guys pay, another $4 for and get coffee for at Starbucks every morning. The issue is the growth. We can't get out on 109. We have to set our schedule every day for leaving after 9 o'clock. I can't turn left and go toward Hancock. I've got to go around and go around Meadow, Clear Lake Meadows, because that's where the stoplight was put. On the master plan in 2004, the city of Gallatin and the developer agreed that the developer would pay for and install a light at Devon Chase and Ryan and 109. Didn't happen. I was told six years ago that the state would have to get involved. The state had made the decision. The state didn't make the decision to keep Gallatin growing at this unbelievable pace to have to add fire stations. So, I'm a little bit reluctant to say anything more than, please, please, for the quaint, beautiful city that I moved to 12 years ago, that my parents decided to retire in 55 years ago, let's keep this building and growth under control. I pull out at the edge of Kroger, you know, the Kroger intersection today, and try to pull back around, go Greenway to go back to the condo. I look that way, and I look that way, and it reminds me of Green Hills Mall area 25 years ago. I would never live in Green Hills Mall area, and I don't want to live in it today. And seniors, I know, looking at statistics, 17 percent of the population of Gallatin is over 65. That's not a big number, but we've been paying taxes and paying taxes here in the state of Tennessee and in Gallatin for a long time, and you really, really need to consider your senior community. So, I appreciate your time today, and just keep us old folks in mind. Also, I can't leave here without saying this. I don't know anything about, I'm just now starting to get involved again, and we'll start, be watching more. I've read a few posts and a few newspaper articles about the hiring of the fire chief. I understand how important that is. I understand there's rivalry going on with the city on that issue, but what I saw here 30 minutes ago from back in the back of the room, I mean, come on, guys, I'm embarrassed for you. I really am embarrassed. You can't make a decision about a fire chief, which is so important to those lives that you have involved, that have made applications to the city of Gallatin that needs a fire chief in place, to the employees. If any, I'm sorry, I come from a corporate background. 25, 30 years ago, I started my own business. If I had been in a corporate background and said, I'm leaving a job because I don't like that boss you just fired, I'd have been out the door. That's not the way you run a business. That's not the way you run a city. My opinion. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Senator. Mr. DeBoer?
My name is Joe DeBoer, and I live at 1007 Hart Street, Gallatin, Tennessee. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on the issue of solid waste sanitation. The challenge before us is the fee to be charged for service of waste pickup. I will break down our costs three ways. The first cost are vehicle and driver in this application. Costs are to be calculated by hour. In the commercial application, it goes by the mile, due to this is how we were paid. Also, another cost is fuel, and this is a basic cost of per truck. She left at a good time. In order to cover cost of escalating fuel costs, one must have a fuel surcharge. That is, place in case we have escalating cost. Now, we address what we haul. The resource authority charges us by the ton. The tipping fee should be broken down to what each citizen pays for as part of the tipping fee. The day of charging by the container is outdated and discriminates against people who have minimal refuse. For the record, the truck I owned and operated was set up with a scale. The trucking industry had this technology because log haulers in the northwest wanted to make sure they didn't get a ticket going off the, going out into the public, on the public road. Down on the farm, we use a scale feed wagon to measure the amount of feed for animals. For me, this is a scale on my bed, because it helps make sure that I don't get too much weight, fluid weight. The resolution is that we charge for the truck driver or basic cost for the fuel cost and surcharge as necessary. And the final point is, what you put in the trash container, you pay for it, not unlike the use of electric and water. Simple. Weigh the trash. Get it up in there! Yeah, I know she will. Bless her heart. By the way, Mayor, since you're behind me, what happened to the sign out front?
We're working on it.
We're working on it. Are you still dragging your feet? Are you still dragging your feet?
No, we're not dragging our feet.
On the sign?
We're trying to move forward.
I had to make sure we got that down, Mayor. Make sure about this. And the final thought is, Mr. John, we're talking about over there off Blakenmore, that ought to be widened and sidewalk put in, because you've already got a sidewalk over there in front of the church. We need to have that area on that side of the railroad track hit first, even Anthony Street, because I know there's a bunch of people fly down through there. I hope they slow down one of these days. And we'd ought to have that fixed up over there on your side before they even come on my side of the railroad track. So, that's what I'm for, and I'm also for Clearview, absolutely, positively, because we don't have that chance on our side of town. We don't have a facility that we could even start. But in that neighborhood, it's just like any place else, plantation, wherever. They have their own little clubhouse, they pay for it through their dues or whatever. They all have the same thing over in your neck of the woods, too. And they have an opportunity there for it, and I don't see why we can't have it. So, I'm for it. Thank you.
Pascal Javance, 135 Longola Park. That stuff I was going to talk about, but I'm going to change things. Just the first thing I was going to talk about, Mayor, congratulations for making the finalist on the Main Street Awards again this year.
Oops, that went you up, sorry.
That was quick.
That's what you named it.
I know. But I, you didn't win this year, and my good friend Jeremy Mansfield, county commissioner, won. So, I know he's watching from far. So, Jeremy, congratulations. Yeah, what we've seen tonight is just unbelievable. Councilman George, Susan, Mayor, and Councilman Hayes, I would like to apologize on behalf of the other back there, because it won't do that. What happened tonight is just, it's just a farce. It's ridiculous. We have charters to follow, and it's not a kingdom. You're not kings. You're not queens. There are rules, and the rules are made to follow. So, I, you know, you have plenty of time until next week, go back in your charter and read it, because I read it to you last week, and there is no black and white. And Susan is right, you're going to open the city to an unbelievable amount of lawsuits. And we're going to lose great candidates. And if tomorrow these candidates leave the pool, I will understand, because what happened tonight was disrespectful for these people. Disrespectful for the people who took the time to apply for a job, who followed rules, and who just got put under a carpet, like if they were not there, because they're not your body. So, that's, that's just, that's shameful. You should be ashamed of yourself. Mayor, Susan, Councilman George, Councilman Hayes, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak this evening under public comment? Seeing no one, I will declare public comment on non-agenda-related items closed. And with that, we need one more motion. Motion to adjourn by Councilwoman Love. Second, my Councilman Everton, all in favor, say aye. We are adjourned. Ladies and gentlemen, be safe going home. We will look forward to seeing you again next time. Good night.
Thank you.